Call me in order, local.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dioroff. Yeah. Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Ms. Hogan.
Present.
Ms. Nyman. Here. Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Upderruth.
Here.
Mr. Zawada. Mr. Panarello.
Here.
All present.
Rise first, pledge allegiance. We just had a previous executive session lasted thirty minutes on information. Recognition showcase.
Good evening. It's hard to believe that the class of 2023 is going to graduate in just over five weeks. That is crazy. It is May next week. Shortly, I'm going to introduce you to several members of this year's senior class. This group of students is here tonight representing a Boyertown graduation tradition. The same tradition generates questions every year. It is the wearing of sashes and cords during the graduation ceremony. And I will share with you that during my discussion with the kids getting ready for tonight, they had questions and I'm sending them back to Dr. Foley. But a lot of times from parents in the community, who wears cords and sashes? Why do they wear them? Why can't outside organizations sponsor sashes or cords for BASD graduating seniors? The wearing of special cords or sashes is reserved for the following students: Class officers, NJROTC students, and students who have completed basic military training, FBLA, National Honor Society, Key Club, and Student Council. Each of these groups represents a school-based organization focused on service. And each of the students wearing a sash or cord for their organization has served a minimum of one hundred service hours. Let's put that into perspective. Every one of the kids up here in the last school, during this school year, has spent the equivalent of two and a half full-time work weeks in community and school service while at the same time maintaining an academic schedule, participating in extracurricular work beyond these clubs, holding down part-time jobs, and more. Over the years, we have been approached by outside organizations asking us to allow students to wear a sash from their organization while graduating. In acknowledgement of their commitment, the gift of their time, and honoring this rich tradition of celebrating their exemplary service to others, we respectfully decline. Their service to others is part of BASD's impact on our students and part of their impact on the world. Many might argue that this tradition is relevant now more than ever. Tonight, we are proud to recognize members of the Student Council who have completed at least one hundred hours of such service. These students will proudly wear what is known as a green cord. That's not all. Students on this year's green cord lists and standing in front of you tonight have completed as many as four hundred hours of service during their time at BASH, one more than six hundred hours. If you look at the four hundred hours alone, that is ten full work weeks in service to their school and to the community. I just spent the last fifteen minutes getting to know the people in front of you. The list of green cord students, by the way, is much longer. These are the people who could join us this evening. In this group, there is a college student, full-time college student, who stayed with us for an extra semester specifically to participate in the Student Council conference that took place in November, right? November, okay? There is a pilot. There are athletes. One student said, "The only thing I don't participate in is music." We have BCTC, National Technical Honor Student, with us tonight. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna let this flow a little loosey-goosey for my normal performances in front of all of you, the recognitions. I'm gonna ask Evan to introduce himself first. They're all going to introduce themselves and tell you where they plan on going post-graduation, and then we will start to open it up to some questions from me and from you as well. Okay? So Evan.
I'm Evan Eikoff. I'm going to Salisbury University next year, majoring in physical education, minoring in coaching, and I'm gonna be a part of the track and field team there as well. And my community service hours, they all actually came from coaching, which is what I'm minoring in. I loved it that much. I coached fourth grade football this year, so that's where I got the bulk of my hours from. And then doing what the man behind the camera does is filming concerts and stuff like that, so got a lot of my hours that way as well. But before I go to Salisbury University, I'm actually going flounder fishing with Ms. Torscha. I remembered that. I'll take you up on that. That's all I got. Go Bears. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nick Berger. I'm going to Jacksonville University for Aviation Management and Flight Operations with a minor in Business. Most of my hours came from being in the scouting program, so I am an Eagle Scout. I've been in the scouting program since first grade. Other than that, I'm a director on BASH TV News. I'm an officer for BASH NHS, and I've done over four hundred hours of service in my years here at Boyertown.
So he will actually wear a gold cord. The colors change as your total number of hours go up. He is one of our gold cord recipients at graduation this year.
And then, as she said, I'm also a pilot then as well. So I work, I fly, and when I have other free time, I sing out my friends.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Warbach, and I will be going to Bloomsburg University in the fall for early childhood education and special education. I get most of my hours from volunteering with Easternburg's Fire Department. I take pictures for them, and I also am going to be a junior firefighter soon. I also volunteer in the classrooms in the area, and I babysit.
There you go, put a plug out there.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nicole Stout. I am the college student she was talking about. I currently finish, actually, one week away from finishing up my first semester as a sophomore at Tany University. I'm majoring in business management. Most of my community service hours, I would say, had to have come from Student Council. I have been doing that since middle school, actually, and I dedicated myself a lot to it, but I also participated in a lot of events in the community. I did a lot of residential homes because it was a really good experience and an eye-opening experience. And yeah, I still, even in college, I'm still in clubs that actually allow me to get involved and do more community service, so.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Jazara Jenkins, and I'm going to Eastern University for a double major in dance and kinesiology. Unfortunately, because of COVID, I wasn't able to document that many volunteer hours, so through the system, I have around a hundred-plus hours. But I would say throughout my years in high school, I have around three hundred hours. These vary mainly locations for my church, like VVS, mission trips, things like that. I'm also a dancer, so this upcoming summer, I'm going to be helping with the dance program for our sister location for our church. I'm also an officer in many different clubs: FCA, main crew commissioner, NHS, and then Student Diversity Union, so those things as well. Pack on.
Hello, I'm Kealan Dry. I'm going to Stockton University to major in marine science, and I'm focusing on a concentration in shark research and aquatic education. I have a little over six hundred and eighty community service hours. And honestly, it's kind of like all over the place with the organizations that I volunteer with, so there's like the All House Arboretum, the Rotary Club, Key Club, NHS. I'm one of the officers for NHS as well. I was a PSC Executive Board member, and I also was one of the head state conference chairs for that, as well as Nicole. And I got a lot of hours over the summer painting murals with Student Council as well. So honestly, just kind of all over the place, but yeah, so that's where I did it. And then I also do, I'm a part-time lifeguard and swim aid as well.
Hi, my name is Griffin O'Brien, and I am going to Arizona State University online through Starbucks College Achievement Program, majoring in food nutrition and entrepreneurship. I am an Eagle Scout like Nick, so I have gotten many of my service hours through volunteering at camp, helping out over the off-season to make sure summer camp is ready for younger scouts who come in, and also at the pool, at aquatics, helping out over there. I volunteer a lot throughout my time in the school, and I also am a part of BCTC in the Culinary Arts Program, and I am in NTHS.
All right, so before I open it up to board questions, we talked about, when we were talking out in the hall, obviously, green cord is not what drives them. So anybody want to talk about why community service is so important to you when volunteers? I'm not shocked by that.
I like doing it for the kids. I like watching the little kids. When you teach them something, and then they go out there, and then they do it, and then they get all excited when it works, like in football and all of that. I love that. You know, it just makes me happy, makes me feel good, because that's how I was when I was young. Like, I know how it is being in their position. That's all I got.
Anyone else before I open it up to questions?
So I volunteer a lot with like environmental programs because I'm going for marine science. So what I want to do is I want to go to, we're at a rescue rehabilitation center, and basically inspire others to get like involved in helping the community with like beach cleanups and stuff like that. So I kind of like got into what I wanted to do for my career by volunteering, and that's kind of how I figured out what I wanted to do. So I kind of just do it to help inspire others, and then I'm trying to get other people to get involved as well.
Can you press that button off for a second? Okay, four questions.
Okay, so. So I don't have a question. I more so have a comment. So I'm Lisa Hogan, board member, obviously. I'm also a full-time student at Millersville University. So I know how hard it is to balance family and friends and education and service. And today, I actually read a quote, and it's a quote by Nelson Mandela, and it says, "Education is the most powerful weapon which we can use to change the world." And I thought about that, and I thought, well, that is correct, but there's a part that's missing. So if you're just educated, I mean, that's wonderful, right? But you need the action, and the action is service. So I commend you all for your service. I congratulate you on your accomplishments, and I'm really excited to see how you guys are gonna change the world. So thank you.
I want to thank you for all your community service. I'm sure every organization out there appreciates everything these guys have done, so thank you. That's a big responsibility.
I just want to thank you guys also, and it's rare to see people so selfless today, so very impressed with you guys.
So I want to thank you, but I want to thank you because we had fun tonight. Out in the hall, like, I got to meet, what are there, eight, seven of you here tonight? Seven amazing people who are changing the world right here as Boyertown Area School District students, making a difference, setting themselves up for success. So congratulations to all of you. Thanks for having fun with this. Thanks for just rolling with it, and you guys did a great job. So congratulations. I can't wait to see you at graduation. Okay?
Thank you for coming.
Do a representative.
I know that. He told me I'd pick him up in the inlet. North shore or south shore?
Okay. Hello, everyone. The month of April has been exciting for all students of Boyertown. So seniors are super excited for prom. Tickets were sold and tables were made. The parking lot on the days that students were buying tickets were pretty crazy. There was like no spots to be had, but that shows how many seniors really wanted to go to prom, which is really exciting. And I'm really excited to see everybody all dressed up and all fancy and having a good time and celebrating their time at BASH. Seniors also received an email about graduation and what's to come. We are all realizing how close graduation actually is. And then on the twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third, the BASH Drama Club presented their spring play Clue, and I personally didn't have a chance to attend, but we heard great things about it, and we wanted to congratulate all the actors, stage crew, and everyone involved. Well done. All right, so we're only a few days away from AP testing, and we want to wish everyone good luck on their test, but we also want to thank all the AP teachers for all they do to prepare us for these tests. We're really thankful for them. Okay. So exciting news is that we had another, we had an opportunity to take a trip to the middle schools to observe all that goes on within the school. While we witnessed the usual hustle and bustle in the hallways, that is expected in a large school, we did not observe any like other chaos or like unruly behavior. Overall, really well behaved. We got to visit a lot of the teachers in different subjects. All the teachers are super sweet and love to talk and teach the kids in their classes. We witnessed a lot of enthusiastic teachers and students were happy to participate in all classes. Some teachers did say that there have been, there have been more behavioral issues since the pandemic, but overall, the trip to the middle schools was productive and enlightening. All right. So a huge highlight of our trip to the middle school was experiencing a teacher going out of his way to make a student feel included. The students were sharing something that they were grateful for in a circle, and they got to a student who wasn't completely fluent in English. The teacher translated the question into Spanish so that the student could still participate in the group discussion. As a school, we should feel like one big community, and teachers like him helped to achieve this. Another cool aspect was that teachers took a variety of approaches to teaching in their classes. For example, one classroom was doing class reading of a book, and then the teacher would pause to allow time for notes, and halfway through the period, they would get up and take a break and have a group discussion where kids could get up in a circle, talk to each other. Classroom approaches like this benefit the students because it kind of gives them a mental break from what they're doing and breaks up like the learning. So overall, we got good feedback on that. And we were also able to visit the libraries at both schools. We really wanted to see West Library because we're East kids. But we found at the school, it was School Library Appreciation Month. So Lexi and I loved the libraries, and it brought back great memories. Middle School ES Library is implementing new activities to bring kids back to the library and show the library isn't all about books and reading. They had events like bookmark making, board games, chess matches, and much more. Also, the librarians informed us that they've checked out over twenty-three thousand books just this year. Middle School West Library was a bit more chill, but they were rearranging and putting newer books on display for students to check out. Thank you all for listening, and we hope everyone has a great night. Good night.
Public comment period number one, Donnie Savage.
Hi, Donnie Savage, Upper Frederick Township. Just glad to see the budget on your agenda tonight, and I'm looking forward to hearing a good thoughtful discussion. Thanks.
Next, we have Krista Collins.
Can I actually go with the next one? I wanted to talk about budget, but I want to hear the presentation, so I thought I might be out.
She's on.
Okay. We'll be looking for the approval meeting minutes for April eleventh.
I mean, moves.
Hogan, second.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dioroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Upderruth.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries. Tonight, I will provide an informational update in regards to the budget for 2023-24. I'm gonna give a brief overview of the district, review some instructional cost trends across the state and across the district, review the PESR rate history and future projections, touch on our charter school cost, I'll review the 2023-24 Act One Index, touch on some budgetary uncertainties that we currently have. Then I will review, as of today, the 2023-24 budgeted revenues and expenditures, provide some key budgetary dates, and then take any closing comments. So just a district overview, there's six elementary schools, two middle schools, one high school, for total students in our buildings of six thousand four hundred sixty. We have additional students in our pre-K program, currently forty-eight students, and we have three hundred and eighteen home-schooled students and seventy-one students in our virtual academy, for total students educated of six thousand eight hundred ninety-seven. And that includes one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight special education students, and approximately a hundred and five of those received services outside of our district. And these numbers are based on our most recently reported October one enrollment to the state. From a personnel perspective, which takes up the largest part of our budget, we have four hundred and sixty-seven professional staff or teachers. We have long-term substitutes of eleven, full-time twelve-month support staff ninety-five, part-time support staff eighty-five, thirty-one administrators, and nine support supervisory. We do rely on other service providers such as Kelly Services, CRES, Mental Health and Special Education Support Services, and Security. The trends in regular education across the state greatly mirror what our district in of itself is experiencing. So from 2016-17 statewide, the regular education costs were twelve billion dollars. In 2020-21, it is now thirteen point eight billion dollars. From a district perspective, our trend has mirrored what the state has done, forty-seven point five million up to fifty-five million in 2021. So that just kind of shows you the trajectory of where regular education costs have gone, both here and across the state within public school districts. Special education costs have also continued to rise, ranging from four point four billion in 2016-17 to five point one billion in 2020-21. Our own trend has ranged from eighteen point nine million up to twenty-one point seven million. You will see we have had some fluctuations over the years, and that's based upon our special ed enrollment and the services that they require. Our charter school costs, and this is again one of our largest mandated costs, our current enrollment is two hundred regular ed students. This projected 2022-23 cost is two million five hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars. We currently have eighty-four special education students enrolled at three million four thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars. We are happy to report that that is within what we've budgeted for charter school costs. We actively are evaluating our own cyber program, actively evaluating the special ed students that are enrolled in cyber charters, and trying to develop a stronger virtual option for some of those special education students in hopes that maybe we can encourage some of those students to come back to our district, thereby providing a better, more robust education, but at a cheaper cost. So we are always actively looking at ways that we can kind of control this mandated cost within the realm that we can. The PESR rate, it's encouraging that in 2023-24, the projection is thirty-four percent. So we will see some small cost savings from that decrease. It was thirty-five point two-six in 2022-23. It drops to thirty-four percent in 23-24, but it is again projected to start climbing again in 24-25 to thirty-four point seven-three percent. We are bound by the guidelines of Act One. Act One governs how much we can increase real estate taxes. It was established in June of 2006 and again modified under Act Twenty-Five of 2011. It limits a school district's ability to increase taxes without referendum or another exception. A district under Act One can raise taxes no more than their adjusted index. Our index for 23-24 is five percent. To raise taxes above the index, the voters would need to approve, or the district would need to be eligible for exceptions. Most districts across the state pass a resolution, as Boyertown did, each budget year agreeing not to raise taxes above their adjusted index. The state has recently, and you can find some information on PASBO, the website, that the state has addressed people, districts filing for exceptions and questioned the need for that. So there's been some state scrutiny placed upon those districts that file for the exceptions. The state has gone out and done some audits and done some, you know, just issued a report that those increases above the Act One were not necessary within the districts that it looked at. That didn't impact Boyertown, however. So again, our Act One Index for 2023-24 is five percent. The statewide base index is four point one percent. You can see that we're kind of within the realm of our decrement between the statewide index and the Boyertown adjusted index is fluctuating between point five and point nine percent, but we're kind of holding that same relative adjusted base difference from the statewide base. We have some pretty significant budgetary uncertainties at this point. The governor's proposed budget was very encouraging. It includes regular education subsidy to the district of eighteen million seven hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred fifty dollars and special education funding of four million nine hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred fourteen dollars. So a pretty significant increase for the district. However, as we know, as the state passes their budget, many things can change, so we'll likely be not till late June, if at all in June, that we know what we're getting from the governor's budget. But that is currently what is proposed for the district. Our largest expenditure is our salaries and benefits. We are in the midst of negotiations with BAEA, our teachers. They're ongoing, and at this point, salary and benefit costs are not yet determined because we are still actively involved in negotiations. Overall, as of today, the 2023-24 budget projections are as follows: budgeted local revenue, ninety-five million seven hundred fifty-nine thousand thirty-nine dollars; state revenue, thirty-nine million sixty thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars; and federal revenue of two million five hundred twenty thousand, for total budgeted revenue of one hundred and thirty-seven million three hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars. I will touch on one thing that will change once the state property tax allocation numbers are released. They should be released in May by the state. Once we receive what the allocation will be, you will see a flip between local and state funding, because the state property tax allocation becomes state funding, and then that provides relief to the local taxpayers. Overall, the number won't change based upon that, just the bucket in which it falls, either local or state revenue. From an expenditure standpoint, salaries are budgeted at fifty-five million. From an expenditure standpoint, salaries are budgeted at $55,42,63. Benefits are budgeted at $37,806,12. Contracted and purchased services are budgeted at $32,191,661. Supplies are budgeted at $5,926,513. And then property, debt surface, and any fund transfers are budgeted at $8,200,596. For total budgeted expenditures, expenditures of $139,167,45. This projects a use of fund balance of $1,827,221. This budget projection is assuming a 3% tax increase. A 5% tax increase, which would take the district up to the index, up to their adjusted index, would decrease fund balance usage to $207,353. The next key budgetary dates is to adopt a proposed final by May 31st, then adopt a final by June 30th. I'll provide this presentation to Sandy, and she'll make sure everybody receives a copy of it.
Patty, on that, can you go back to that slide with the Peasars? It was down 34% and then it's up 34. Do you have a reason on why that jumped up like that?
That's based upon the overall performance of the Peasars fund. So they had better than, yeah, their fund. So they issue that. That's what every district across the state is required to pay. So they had better-than-expected returns leading into the 23-24 year, which is where the 34% came.
Thank you.
So can you go back to the Act One? Okay. Can you explain how the state comes up with that, with the number for each district?
I can provide you the in-depth calculation.
What's, I'm sorry, I'm looking more for like what's, what they're considering.
I can send you the exact calculation from the state. It's based upon a combination of factors, including market value and personal income for each district related to the state. That's the easiest way to explain it without getting into the minute details.
Got you. And then, do we know how much money that the Peasars decrease is going to save, like in dollars?
It will save us, from a Peasars perspective, a little over half a million, a little over 500,000.
But that's just for this year?
Just for this year.
And then it's projected to climb?
Yeah, to climb.
It's projected to go up year after year?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And then what is our current fund balance?
So our current unassigned fund balance is roughly $12 million.
Currently?
Yep.
Is that our designated or undesigned on balance?
That would be undesigned. And I can provide an update on the overall fund balance as it sits as of May, at the May meeting, to kind of give you an idea of where it sits as we're getting through this current year, and then where this projected use would put us.
Okay. And in this, in the projected, like at 3%, that projected almost $2 million fund balance usage, is that projected off of what the governor has allocated? I mean, that, because that budget hasn't passed, like how was that?
So right now, included in the budget is 100% of what this governor has proposed. I am confident with, you know, the state projections of what they've brought in in revenue, that the governor will fight to have those dollars come to school districts. But again, we'll watch that closely and see if there's any change in that to the negative that we appropriately budget for that.
Right, because that would further impact our fund balance.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Can I clarify that for a second, Patty? You're saying that you have included in your budget 100% of what Governor Shapiro has recommended for the Boyertown School District?
Correct, from a regular ed and a special ed perspective.
So if the state legislature doesn't support that, and it would be a lesser amount, then that would impact the extent to which we would have to invade fund balance, correct?
Correct. I think it's important for the board to understand that while there's projected use of fund balance, we can use fund balance, but that means in the next coming years, we're going to need to make adjustments so that we don't put ourselves in a negative fund balance position. You don't want to have an ever-increasing fund balance because that's not what the intended fund balance is for school districts. But we want to be very cautious of using, you know, continual amounts of fund balance. We want to make sure that along the way, we're making the decisions necessary to, you know, cut the mandated costs that we can and kind of get ourselves in a position that we're ultimately, we want to be at a balanced revenue and expenditure budget. We know we can't take, you know, mass changes in any one year in a school district. Things take longer to, you know, make adjustments too. So that's, if we use fund balance in one year, then we have to, you know, know that going into next year, this is an active conversation that, you know, administration has. We have to be preparing for that next budget season to get us in a position that we're using less and less fund balance till we get to that balanced budget standpoint.
I have two additional questions relating to that. Number one, as the result of ESAR funds drawing up at the end of the next fiscal year, what implications will that have from a budgetary perspective? And can you comment to the board about the financial wisdom of creating a structural deficit by using fund balance to pay for a reoccurring expenditures?
From, for your first question on the ESAR funding, there is nothing we have spent ESAR funds on that we will be faced with when those funds dry up. So we, with the Office of Teaching and Learning and the Superintendent's Office, have been very careful to spend those expenditures on one-time things or things that we know we can sustain on our own. The second question on the structural deficit, you have to be very cautious about spending your fund balance on ongoing expenditures. If you're not, you know, the next year or the second year thereafter are going to make corresponding decreases in those ongoing expenditures, that's where you're going to come into a standpoint where you now are trending toward a negative fund balance. So you can use fund balance to get yourself through. However, you can't continually operate as a structural deficit. You have to get your revenues and expenditures on balance. That's, you know, active conversations that we have as a cabinet. I can tell you, I'm always the most popular person in the room when it comes to those discussions, but we are actively focused on getting the district to a level where it's a balanced budget.
So just two more questions. I know that we're in negotiations, and obviously, we don't know what the outcome of that will be at this time, but would, that could impact our fund balance as well?
It could impact, yes. And we would share any, anything that we would propose to the board. We would give full disclosure of what those exact costs are in the contract and what it would do to both the expenditures and the related fund balance if needed.
Okay. And has anything, any padding been built into our budget for that?
Any padding?
Like, so did it? I know, that was awkwardly.
That's a bad question to ask, Ms. Dennis.
There's not a lot of fluff in our budget. But based upon, you know, what we have discussed with the board in executive sessions, those things have been planned for.
Okay. And then lastly would be, yeah, I promise. Lastly would just be, at what point do we have to become seriously concerned, like that our fund balance is, like, at what point, when we dip below? Do you know what I'm saying?
There are state guidelines about what you can't go above. But quite honestly, those percentages are so low. If you were in a position where you were falling much below that, I would be concerned. You'd be, I would become concerned if we're not making the necessary changes to our ongoing expenditures to keep us in a stable financial position. It's hard. It's hard decisions to make. We want to give more and give more to the students, and that's what we're here for. But sometimes we have to make those tough decisions. If we get to a point where we can't make those tough decisions, that's where I'd be concerned.
Okay.
If there's not cash flow, then there's a problem.
Right.
And you would hear it firsthand.
I've lived through districts that have had negative cash flow, and nobody in this room would like to be a part of that. It is a very difficult situation. You have difficult conversations with vendors, with people, and I would never knowingly put the district in that position. It's difficult when districts get into that position.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a graph or anything like it was like four years ago till now?
I can put that, build that into the presentation at the May meeting.
Do you have a number on about how much it jumped per year?
It's been fluctuating like up and down, so I can, I don't know it offhand, but I can get that for the next presentation.
Okay.
Ms. Duroff, or Mr. Zawada, any questions?
No, I don't like this setup.
Treasurer report.
Good evening. I'm just going to speak to you tonight about the March 2023 Treasurer's Report. A few highlights. For our local revenue, delinquent tax collection was approximately $125,723.34. Earned income tax collection was approximately $1,860,322.11. And our transfer tax collection was approximately $48,739.10. For some state revenue information, our PDE Special Education subsidy was approximately $665,452. PDE Retirement Subsidy was approximately $2,77,156.30. And some information about expenditures in the category of salaries and benefits. It accounted for about 67% of our monthly expenditures. And that concludes the Treasurer's Report for this evening. Thank you.
Motion to approve the Treasurer's Report. So what are seconds?
Mr. Bothy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I will be asking for the Board of School Directors to accept the Berks County Community Foundation awarded disbursement in the amount of $500 to represent one grant from the following fund. A $500 grant from the Teacher Mini Grant Fund awarded to Gilbertsville Elementary for the materials to support the STEM Identity Project.
Hogan moves.
Nine seconds. Mr. Bothy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'll be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the 2023-2024 Board of School Directors Meeting Calendar as presented. Just as an overview, the second Tuesday of each month is going to be designated for the Committee of the Whole meetings. There are some committees that will be meeting on those months that are specified on the calendar. There are a few months where we won't have two meetings, like July and November, due to the November being, oh my goodness. Yeah, Thanksgiving and then along with December, when we bring in new board members. So if you have all reviewed the calendar, I would be looking for a motion.
Hogan motions.
So what are seconds?
Okay, again, I'm asking a question. I see you just changed words around a little bit, and you still have dates for different committees. And my question is, if you have, for instance, Policy Committee on August 8th, can I get into and ask questions about facilities and/or finance, or must it be specifically on policy?
It does not have to be specifically on policy. We were just letting all the board members know that these different committees did request to have meetings those months. So they will definitely be featured, and anyone else that has business, that certainly can occur because it is the Committee of the Whole.
Would those questions have to be forwarded to the Board President prior to the meeting, or can it be brought up at a meeting to be discussed?
They can be brought up at the meeting.
Thank you.
But they would have to, just a quick, they would have to be brought up ahead of time, wouldn't they, to be on the agenda for that meeting? I guess you'd ask that question.
Couldn't it be under board comment? Any comments can be made, right?
It would be under a board comment, but if you want it as an agenda item, even though it's a meeting of the whole, you would still have to have it put forward ahead of time or anything that the administration would want to bring. Still, they put forward ahead of time, so it's posted.
If they wanted to add it to the agenda, you mean?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, if they want to add to the agenda, of course, yeah. Just like now.
So it's the same, it's the same as the meeting of the whole that we have now. It's just that, that these.
It's still called Committee of the Whole.
Yeah.
Nothing's changing.
Yeah, it's Committee of the Whole, and it's just, it's just a placeholder. If a certain committee wants to bring something forward, they have the opening speeches, so to speak, at that meeting. That's all it is. But it is a meeting in the whole. It would continue the same way we have in the past.
Correct. Okay, Ms. Duroff.
And I need three people to say I want something on the agenda. I could do it all by myself like a big girl.
My response, Mrs. Duroff, would be that if there was something that, that you're looking for to be placed on the agenda for discussion purposes or to be voted on, certainly, you would be bringing it forward to the leadership and myself so that it can be placed in that agenda. It would be the same process as what we would be following right now.
Yeah, I believe the three people thing is just to remove something from the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. I just want to know the rules for complaint fair.
Mr. Bothy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
No.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, the administration recommends the Board of School Directors approve the following personnel actions, including resignations, employment, appointments, change of status, leave of absences, and supplemental contracts as per the attached.
Hogan moves.
Nine seconds. Mr. Bothy.
Yes.
Ms. Duroff.
I lost my thing. Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comment period number two, starting with Mrs. Savage.
Thank you to Mrs. Denicola for providing a more in-depth presentation tonight than we've seen so far and than we saw last year. I do want to comment on the priorities and the performance of the board in that respect, though. So far this year, the board has spent a couple hours over three meetings to approve a school calendar for the upcoming school, school year, also spent an hour or so in three meetings to approve this board meeting calendar, and up until tonight, spent seven minutes of a presentation and less than 30 seconds of comments, and then tonight, 20 more minutes with comments, in-depth comments and questions only from one board member on the $137 million budget for the upcoming school year. I just questioned the comments. I did your priorities. I did review the board budget process for years prior to 2021. The discussions usually started in late fall and included multiple meetings covering revenue history and projections, expenditure history and projections, diving into the main cost drivers like personnel, healthcare, charter schools, mandates, facilities, special ed, technology, and curriculum. It included long-range projections with various scenarios based on different assumptions. We haven't seen anything of that yet. It did a deficit analysis and ideas for increasing revenue or reducing costs. Last year and again this year, very little of that has happened. In the meantime, our students are suffering. You will be voting on the proposed final budget according to your calendar in just two weeks, and historically, not much changes after that. So that is your last opportunity for real discussion. Assuming that you have not violated the Sunshine Act and all deliberations have been public, you will be making one of the most important decisions of a school board with very little information. So this message is to our community at a whole, as a whole. You can cast your vote on May 16th to change the makeup of this board, removing petty antics and national political agendas from the boardroom and putting a focus on what's important at Boyer Town. Strong boards make strong communities. It's up to you to change the district, to change the direction of the district and move Boyer Town forward. Thank you.
Ms. Collins.
There we go. Sorry, Ms. Collins, Christa Collins, Washington Township. I think there's a lot of really important questions that need to go into our budget. Our budget has gone up significantly in not that long of a period of time. I think it was not that long ago, it was less than $100 million, if I'm not mistaken. And that's before I moved here to the, to the area. So there are times when I think taxes need to increase. There are also times when I think we need to make really hard decisions and really look at the budget. I obviously have not had a chance to really look at the budget. It was a good presentation tonight, but I think there's a lot more in-depth discussion that needs to happen. Americans as a whole are really hurting, and inflation has been continually high since the administration took over in 2021, and has just simply continued. So I think if you're looking at a tax increase, there's certain people that feel that all you do is just increase taxes, or certain people that feel that you really need to make some hard decisions, and maybe there's a balance in between the two. But hopefully, this board will really sit down and dive into this. I also heard no discussion about safety in the budget. I heard no questions about safety being added to the budget or what we spend on safety. That is something that is extremely important, and that is something where if you did need to look at potential increases that are hopefully small, I think you could accomplish making sure that our school is safe, making sure that our kids are safe, our teachers are safe, our staff are safe. That is something that I think needs to really be addressed as well. So obviously, I'll follow up with more questions on the budget, but please, you know, I guess don't just look at this as a chance to increase taxes because you haven't done a lot of in-depth analysis. So thank you very much. Sorry for stumbling, I didn't really have anything planned tonight.
What comment period?
Nothing at this point.
Yeah, thank you. Recently, I was out for breakfast one Sunday morning, and I talked with a couple of the people from up at the Rod and Gun Club, who said we have a fishing rodeo coming up again, and how they appreciated it so much last year. The one guy in specific said the kid that he had, the student that he had, was so awesome, kept asking him questions about what he could do, what he couldn't do. So I think this being our second year, hearing a lot of the guys from up at the club are really looking forward to this again. So I look forward to having a good report back on that one. Thank you.
Ms. Duroff.
I was wondering, Mr. President, if we have looked at or are looking at the new educational Chapter 49 of Title 22 of the Pennsylvania School Code, I was wondering if it had any financial impact to it due to the possibility that training might have to be done for the qualifications as required by the Pennsylvania Department of Ed to implement CRSE. Okay, no answer. So in case you don't know what CRSE...
Well, Ms. Denicola, would you have that answer?
I'm not familiar with that code section.
On your committees...
Professional education, correct, Mayor Beth, if I remember correctly?
I would have to, I'm not satisfied.
What is the acronym standing for, Mrs. Duroff?
Yeah.
Culturally Reverent and Substaining Education. And somebody should know because this is going to take effect July 1.
We are well aware of it, and it is a mandate coming down from the state, and it is a requirement for training our staff.
Right.
And the rumors in the state are that they're changing the actual title of what that responsibility for the districts to do is. We're waiting for more specifics to come down. So it is, it's some of our teacher induction program that will be part of what we're required to do.
Correct. And with, with our committees, one of them by this time should have been working on it because it is going to be a financial implication for this, number one, and we already have three schools that are suing the state. Where do we stand? Why are we behind all this?
I wouldn't say we're behind on it because it's a new mandate that's coming down from the state. We are looking at how it is going to be embedded into our current induction practices and what the requirements are going to be. So we are actively seeking out what that is going to look like, and the clarity coming from the state has not been completely guiding us to move forward with that.
But am I, am I not correct that it's supposed to be implemented July 1? If nothing happens, it'd be 3.
The initial guidelines were that it's supposed to be embedded for the 23-24 school year. That is correct.
Okay, well, we have so many committees here that we...
Mrs. Duroff, it's like we talked about with the, I'm, I'm going to go back to some very long conversation times, but our initial calendar and the requirements that we were looking at in training our teachers to meet all of the state mandates. We did make a reference to this responsibility months ago with respect to what we were asking, what we're going to be asked to train our teachers on. So this was another one of those things that came down from the state that we need time to instruct our teachers and support them on, and it's going to be embedded into our future practices.
So do we have money set aside for this if we need to train them?
It, it's truly not, Mrs. Duroff, necessarily about the money to train them, it's about having the time to be able to do that and try to balance that with all the requirements that we're being asked to do for all of our teachers. I don't think there's a specific program that's going to come down that is going to be required that we purchase into. I think it's more about pedagogical practices that we may be looking into doing to help support our teachers, to provide background information.
Okay, so when, how will we be updated? How will we hear about this?
Administration.
It's certainly something that the Student Services Education Committee can bring to the table. We, you know, it's topics that as we project our times out to present to the board with various topics, we can certainly bring some of that information up. We have touched base on that, based upon future responsibilities that we're being asked to do, but we haven't spent an inordinate amount of time speaking to that because we're really truly waiting for more specific guidance to come down.
Okay, so you are aware that there's three schools already suing the state?
And, and like we look at what the state is requiring us to do, we have to follow what the state is requiring us to do, and I, I can't speak to what other districts are, how they're opting to handle some of, of the mandates that might be coming down.
One quick thing, there are eight, eight pages to this of competencies that our teachers are supposed to be going on. Let me read the first one. Reflect on their own life experience as a membership of various identity groups based on race, skin color, X, N, S, C, gender. It goes on from there, eight pages of this. I would have thought that we would have some sort of discussion around this, because this is, in my opinion, and it's going to get my opinion only, is trying to push our teachers from teaching into being social justice advocates, and I don't understand how that makes our, our district any better or the state any better. And it seems to me to be a complete overstepping of boundaries of the Department of Education in reaching down into, into the school districts. I'm just appalled that this, that this is coming out, and it's being, to me, it's being snuck through under the guise of other things, and it's just something, I would, Mr. Sultanic, can you give us any guidance or any thought, anything that's going on with this court case? What the, what the basis of it is and what the schools are, are going after?
I am not familiar particularly with the actions that have been brought against the Department of Education regulatory-making authority. Typically, in order to be successful to overturn an action of a state agency, you have to research whether or not they have appropriately propagated the regulation under the state laws and the like. And I have not done that research, nor have I, nor do I represent a district that is currently challenging this action on the part of the Department of Education. This might also be something that we as a school district may want to raise with the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, which is our lobbying arm under the circumstances, and that may be more successful than an individual challenge to the Department of Education's regulatory-making authority.
Could I, I have to ask the Board President this, could I request that, that we get some sort of, I guess, understanding of what this is all about and what sort of support or anything we can do by the next meeting so that we have, have some sort of understanding of what, what's coming down on us at this point? I don't know exactly what you could do for that, but I think we need another thorough, more thorough understanding of this act and its effects on us, and, you know, what the, what the basis of the, of the present, present lawsuits are and, and overall effects on us. I'm, there are a couple of different things being, you know, being affected here, the students, the parents, and especially the teachers. I, I'd like to know what kind of position the teachers are being put in to follow this because this is their competencies that they're going to be graded on and judged on. I think that's got to have an, an impact on the teachers themselves, and I'm really worried about how that's perceived by the community and also by the teachers. I think, I think we need to be protecting them on these things.
Just, just to speak to that, Mr. Bothie, it is information that has truly recently come down from, from the state, and to be completely transparent, we've, we've read the information behind the scenes, and we do have questions about what that looks like and what the requirements are and what the overall target and goal of those responsibilities are. As, as anything that comes from the state, we, we, we get it, we look at it, we analyze it, we look at what that's going to look like in practice. And, and like I said to Mrs. Duroff, this is something that we are trying to digest. Look at local districts that are, you know, digesting the same information and looking at how it's going to be implemented. So I can't say to you, to Mrs. Duroff, to any other board member, how we're looking at what this is going to look like. I just know that it's behind, that the core conceptual piece of it is behind the scenes to support from a professional learning perspective those competencies, and that, that's what I know. How that gets interpreted and, and the eight pages that you're making reference to, again, that's, there's a lot of information there.
Yeah, once again, no criticism to the administration on this point or anyone else. It's that, well, I can't say not to anyone else, there are people to be criticized. But this has come out, it's, it's, it's completely under the radar. I've talked to other school districts and other school board members, they didn't even know about it. So this is kind of like a middle-of-the-night type of things being pushed down, at least to me. I think there may be other people with more knowledge than me that knew about this, but I didn't, and several other school districts I've talked to also are not aware that this is even coming down. And July 1st is when we're going to start talking about doing it and holding the teachers accountable to this, to this new standard. I, I think that's something that needs a lot more, a lot more discussion, not only at board level, but probably at state level. And I obviously don't have the authority to do it on the state level. No criticism.
And I, and I didn't, I don't, I don't take it that way. I'm just, what I'm trying to emphasize is that we are there trying to understand and interpret it as well as we can to, to help move forward. There, there were a few different mandates that came around at that same time that we're trying to digest.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Sultanic?
I just renewed the extent that I know, but if the majority of the board wants me to investigate this with the administration, I certainly can, but that would require direction from the board.
At this time, this is not our priority. We are focusing on many other things to finish out the school year, and when we are done with this school year, we will get to this point and address it. But at this point, this is not our priority. So, and once we do have definitive information from the state with respects to what direction we need to go or steps that we're supposed to be taking, we can bring that information back to you, but at this point, this is not something that we have taken our time to look into any further other than reading the, the latest information that has come forward. So if there's going to be something that's that impactful to our school district and, you know, employees, which then, you know, filters down to our students, we certainly would bring this forward. But at this time, the, the reason why we're all looking is because we've really not taken, you know, the time to really dive into this because there's about 10 pages of new things that are coming down from, from the state.
And just to add to, to Mrs. Torscha, this is, it's, it's a lot of information, like we spoke about. The, the understanding is that it's not just a one-year, it would be over a three-year kind of timeframe from the perspective, and I will tell you that from the curriculum coordinators of the county, administrative, the assistant superintendents, the superintendents, it is information that everybody's trying to figure out. So I believe there will be more conversation coming down from the state level about what that looks like. The last I truly had heard that they're even looking to change the name and reinterpret some of those things. So as, you know, Mrs., like we, we get information and how we interpret it. So we have not jumped to Mrs. Torscha's point in trying to see what this is going to look like without really knowing what we truly need to do or where it's going to land before we move forward with anything.
Okay, so is there anything else from, from Mrs. Duroff? I don't know if she was done.
No, I just wanted to say, we pay thousands of dollars a year at the PSBA, and they don't notify us, or we can't ask them what's going on to give us more in-depth information. In other words, you're saying they don't have any more information than what I read. Is that, I'm, I'm not trying to push blame on anybody, but let's go.
Well, typically, we don't take... I have not seen the Pennsylvania School District issue of something, and it is my understanding that these legal actions, it was just reported today that three Pennsylvania school districts have taken the state to court over these guidelines that have been... have taken the state to court over these guidelines that have been issued by the Department of Education. And so that literally, whatever challenge that was filed to the guidelines was filed as of yesterday. So this is very recent. So that's why I don't think you're going to see much out there, but certainly the Department of Education, certainly, I mean, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association can be contacted on this particular issue.
Thank you.
And I believe Morris and Penncrest School Districts are two of the school districts that have been involved in the litigation.
Yeah, and Laurel. Laurel, Penncrest, and Morris.
Taking back in on what Mr. Brophy just said, we kind of got away from that. I would personally, and if we do a show of hands or somehow, to ask Mr. Sultanic to try and take a look into this or put it on his radar for us because he has more information that he can deal with than we can as school board members. And maybe it'll relieve some of what the administration will have to do. This stuff's been coming down for the last two, three years. It's just finally hitting us now. This has been all across the country, and that's why they're thinking they're going to sneak it in. But it is something that I know this community is very, very upset about, and a lot of parents are upset about it. So if, I don't know what we need to do, Mr. Sultanic, to give you a go-ahead of maybe keeping on it and not pay for it. No.
My suggestion is that we allow our intermediate unit to, you know, give us this information that it has not been brought out in any of our meetings, whether it's the superintendent's, assistant superintendent's curriculum. So I feel that this information is relatively new, and for the organizations to be able to be getting that direction and then being able to pass it along to us before we would engage Mr. Sultanic.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
I just sent an article to the superintendent that she can share with the board.
I actually want to follow the procedure that we should follow. I'm not trying to step on people's toes, but it is something that we've been talking about for a couple of years now. Back to my comments real quick. I want to thank Patty. I know how much work she's put into this the last couple of years. Her numbers have been spot-on. It's kind of hard to do a budget when you don't know what's coming in, and that's our illustrious governments from the state up to the federal. So again, Patty, thank you for what you got talked about, and there will be a lot of reviewing, okay? The Finance Committee will get involved, and I'm sure there may even be an executive committee meeting to discuss further and then be brought to the public. I just want to give parents an idea. There is safety in this school district. I can't get into specifics because we're going to give away different things that we've been implemented in our school district. But as scared as I am, and you can't, and Mrs. Torscha said this tonight, you can't put a dollar amount on a child. And I'm not trying to put a dollar amount, but we've had significant upgrades in the last three, four years here in all our buildings. And there's going to be more upgrades because they're constantly looking into it, and there's monies that are out there that are being helped. The state is helping us. So, and that is, that's, that money itself is being appropriated to different, you know, safety issues. We do have a full-time company that we work with, okay, that is experts in this, and they come in and review. So I just want to, like I said, we can't get into insights, but I feel comfortable that our students, you know, and pray to God that it never happens, but we've done, I'm going to say, a very good job. There's always room for betterness, but there, you know, it is, it is in front of the administration and it is in front of the board and our concerns. We've got two board members that have students in this school district, and there's people that are answering, asking for these questions that have students in this school district, and they have every right to ask these questions. But I just want to let those people know that it's not falling on deaf ears, but you have to understand that we just can't lay out our plan and let everybody know because then they're going to know how to, you know, beat the systems. But it is a concern. It's been a concern, especially this last six months. You know, it started two years ago, but it just seems like it's gone crazy. It's being pushed to mental health, and there's money being put towards that. So there's a lot of different ways that the school district's trying to, you know, take care of this issue, and they're looking at it just as a gun issue or something like that. So up to that, I hope I didn't overstate anything that we shouldn't have said, but I just want to, you know, give the public the idea that we are taking full well into consideration, probably more than anything, the children's safety in this, in this school Again, Patty, I really want to thank you again. I know we're going to be sitting down. It's scary when you look at that we, nobody wants to raise taxes in this type of atmosphere. But also, people don't want us to cut. So it's a sharp edge either way, and it's something that we, as a school district, we inherited, okay? We've got a situation now that, like you said, inflation's through the roof. We've got people's paychecks are going backwards. You've got two parents, you know, both parents working, so they don't have the time to spend with their children, and it's not a good way that we're going. And I agree 100% that there should be more, but we just can't. Well, if we were the federal government, we could just write a check, but we're not, and there's no money trees in Boyer Town and any other trees. So just bear with us, and this isn't going to sit on itself. There'll be a lot of work done. But again, it's hard to figure a budget when you don't even know what your income's going to be except for your taxes, and that's thankful to both the mids and the state. I want to thank our students tonight that, you know, that are showing all the community service that they do. That's always been a big thing with Boyer Town that we can be proud of. And it is a lot of work, but it makes you proud because they care, and that's what this world needs is more people caring. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swata. You pretty much covered the safety part, but I did feel that it was important to put parents at rest on that, that that is being discussed and taken care of, and well, well-handled by administration. Also, as far as the budget goes, I do dig in, and I, and you can ask Mrs. D'Anacole about. I do ask a lot of questions when it comes to it. I am of the same mindset right now with everything that's gone on in our country, and even the dollar is being threatened, that I tell you, sometimes I just don't, it's, it's going to be a tough decision for the board, I think, for some on the board when it comes to the, you know, raising taxes. So it's not something I don't think anyone here is going to just, you know, okay, we'll just do this. No, I think everyone's going to really work hard at it.
So I'm going to start by thanking Olivia and Lexi. You guys always work hard. I know this was, a lot of work went into this report, and I appreciate it. Thank you to Mrs. D'Anacole for all of her work. I know this is a stressful time of year for her, so I just wanted to tell her I appreciate it. Thank you to Allison and all the kids in the student report, student spotlight, excuse me. You always do a fantastic job, so I always appreciate it. And then I just had two other comments. One was that I'd really like to suggest that we look into getting a rep to the PSBA next year so all school boards can send, can send a representative or have a representative. I suggest that we really look into that for next year so that we can be more in touch with just the advocacy that they're doing. I think it's really important to at least have the knowledge of what's going on, and then, within the organization, I mean. And then the other thing, I just wanted to remind everyone that budget discussions amongst the board need to be public. Otherwise, we'd be violating the Sunshine Law, which, you know, there are very specific and narrow reasons to, of things that can be discussed in an executive session. So we really have to, if we have questions, we really need to make sure that we're bringing them publicly. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Upcoming meeting dates, we have, our next meeting will be held on May 9. This will be, gosh, yeah, it'll be a committee of the whole meeting. I can't believe that we're heading into our last two months. This will be at Boyer Town Elementary School, 7 o'clock PM. And then the following meeting during May will be May 23, which will be here at the Ed Center. And thank you all for your patience with our new setup. We know that we need to make some adjustments, and we'll make sure that we move this end of the group over to there, I believe, and we'll bring that section over here so that it's more functional and that Mr. Panarello can see everyone at all times because I know that's a priority.
It's a priority.
So, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I can't collect bears.
10 seconds.
We got to collect our bears.